Oh my gosh, are we gonna start at a council meeting like that?
For the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God and the mission with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, blessed decision of this body, guide us tonight and the future as well. Amen.
Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Ravellette?
Here.
Mr. Stangle?
Here.
Mr. McNeese?
Here.
Mr. Lau?
Here.
Mr. Gornell?
Present.
Mr. Salters?
Here.
Mr. Grove?
Here.
Mayor Yocum?
Here.
Adoption of the agenda?
Uh, I wanna make a quick change of the agenda. Uh, new business, I wanna move E and F up under B. That allows us to get most of the business done because we've got two guests that'll be speaking to us. I wanna make sure that we have time for them to discuss things and we can get this business done quickly.
I'll second with the changes.
Motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to approve the agenda with the, uh, the changes of C and D. Move B and move to the bottom of the agenda.
Question.
Mr. Gornell?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Okay, and by a vote of seven to zero, the agenda is approved. Uh, need approval of the July twelfth minutes.
Make a motion to approve the July twelfth minutes.
I'll second.
Motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to approve the minutes as presented.
Question.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Gornell?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, the minutes are approved. Petitions, memorials, remonstrances. And then we'll move to committee chair reports.
All right, um, it's been a while since our last solid waste update. Uh, the last solid waste meeting we had, we passed a resolution to purchase, uh, the building, so that's been basically a long discussion that we've had. I mean, it's been going on almost two years at this point.
Yes.
Um, so we're getting closer to getting to a spot. Uh, we passed the resolution and all those, uh, legal issues they're dealing with right now to make sure that everything's final, and we're moving forward with that. So we're in a good position there, um, and that's good for the city of Vincennes. And you gotta tip your hats to Michelle and her crew, um, and the work that they put into this and staying with it and allowing us to get that. Uh, so things are going well in that front for solid waste for us in the city of Vincennes. Uh, we had a walkable city meeting last Thursday, um, and I think it went extremely well. Uh, Councilman McNeese was there, the mayor was there, and we had a lot of, uh, people in the community that were there. Uh, the big thing from that is, um, instead of asking our city engineer to do a sidewalk inventory, he's busy, he's got a lot of work to do. Uh, we're gonna kinda do it group by group, individual by individual, and we kinda looked that over and went through that. Um, so I think it was very productive. Councilman McNeese, would you have anything to add there?
No, I, just the only thing, the, the rubric we came up with to be able to grade sidewalks. I do just wanna thank the public that's been coming to those meetings. Uh, we've had a number of individuals who are being, uh, been involved from the beginning, but this time around, we saw new individuals, uh, showing up, so there is the interest from the public. Also, their willingness to help. Uh, I just wanna say thank you.
And then last week, we looked a little bit at the fix at Vincennes forum, and I was able to set it up to where it can automatically send email notifications to anybody, kinda test that out. So it's ready to go, uh, when we say okay, uh, but everything that we want to do works technology-wise, so we're good on that front when it comes to there. So everything's looking good in that. Um, and those are the, uh, committee reports that I have for today.
Uh, the UEA, uh, we decided to, uh, form a committee out of that board. We're going to write up some new, uh, laws and, uh, rules, uh, for the committee, or for the board. In the past, some discrepancies have been kinda brought to our attention, so that's the need for this. And that meeting will be tomorrow, or actually, uh, the third, Tuesday, um, at, uh, five-thirty here at City Hall. Thank you.
Uh, Vincennes Redevelopment Commission met, uh, and it was a quick meeting, but there is a, a bit of an update on Phase Two and Three of Main Street that will take it all the way out to the high school. Phase Two and Three will be constructed essentially at the same time. Uh, we broke 'em up, uh, intending to have two different constructions and that kinda thing, but it's all gonna happen at the same time. Late twenty-twenty-two, uh, is when we hope to let all those kinda things to happen, so that's it.
No other reports? Report of city officers? Depending on, we'll go to public comment.
Yes, sir.
You can come up to the mic and...
Good evening. My name's Larry Wilcox. I live at twelve-eighteen Broadway Street in Vincennes, and I would like to speak to you about our worst neighbor in the twelve-hundred block of Broadway Street, and that's the church. That church, I've had numerous conversations with the minister there for, uh, over the years, and, uh, I just wanna let you know some of the things that are happen- happening. Uh, they have homeless people stay in there in the vacant lot next to the church now. I have no problem with homeless people. I feel sorry for 'em, but for the grace of God, we could all be there too. So homeless people, that's not my problem. My problem is how they're being taken care of. The other night at my house, I measured two-point-seven-five inches of rain. There were two people, or maybe three, out there in tents. That's not Christian, but it's definitely not the way it should be. The trash. About a month ago, we had, uh, an awful smell in that neighborhood. Uh, you can talk to all the people on the block. We were all going around trying to figure out where this smell was coming from. And it took about two weeks before, uh, it finally went away. Uh, my, my next-door neighbor was, uh, out looking for a dead body. That's how bad it smelled. It was that bad. When we found out what it was, the church had dumped raw chicken in their dumpster. And when I talked to the minister, he said they had had the dumpster emptied the day before, but the, they never dumped it again after they put all that chicken in there. And it had to be a lot of chicken. The minister told me that they had to use lye and bleach to get the smell out of the dumpster, so, I mean, it was bad. It was awful. The trash, uh, they have their, their Friday night meetings for the recovery, and that's great. But every Saturday morning after they have the meeting, also after the services on Sunday, I have to go up and down the street and, uh, pick up cigarette butts and trash. A few weeks ago, they had some kind of a meeting at the church, and they passed out business cards. I picked up business cards out of my yard. Uh, you know, what kinda neighbor goes and trashes your yard? Food in the alley. We have a real problem with feral cats in that neighborhood. I don't know if any of you live around there or have been there, but there's a real problem with feral cats. Sometimes there are up to, I would say, close to a dozen cats in that area. The people of the church, when they have their meetings and things, they take the food that's left over and dump it out in the alley. I'm not talking about a hot dog or a hamburger. I'm talking about a pile, this big round and this high, of food that stays out there until it's either eaten or rots. After, while the homeless people have been living there, and again, I, I have no problem with homeless people, but, uh, a, a few days ago, I found a sanitary napkin in our yard, which tells me that, uh, either the church is not letting the people in to use their facilities, or I have no idea. They did put a porta potty out, but that was after the people had been there for a couple of weeks. You know, if I was gonna have somebody camped in my yard, I would have the porta potty put there before the people came. And then, the reason I'm here tonight, the thing that just corked it for me, that finally did me in, my wife and I went to the commissary of Crane the other day. On the way home, we came, drove down the alley, and there was only one tent left there at that time, but the guy, and there's a porta potty there, the guy was out of the tent, standing between the chimney and a little building there next to the church, urinating on the wall of the church. That did it for me.
What's your address and what's the address of the church again? Can you tell me?
Twelve-eighteen Broadway is where I live. And, uh...
The church is right there on the corner.
The church is right there on the corner, yeah, yeah.
So twelfth and Broad, right?
Mm-hmm.
Twelfth and Broadway, yeah.
And the city inspector has been dealing with these individuals?
Hey, that was the question I was gonna ask. We passed an ordinance that dealt with RVs, staying on property for a long time and not having the proper electricity or not having the proper sanitation. Does this, I mean, it's not an RV, but it's pretty close. I mean, you're camping. It's the same kinda deal, so...
Well, they're not, they're not, the...
Yeah.
The RV that...
Is there something that we need to up, is there something that we already have that we can update?
So...
Hey, Brad, I, I mean, it probably come on up, so it's in the minutes too. But I, I guess the question is, is we did this very similar kinda issue when it came to campers.
Yes.
Uh, with RV or something. This seems even less than RVs. Uh, I, I think maybe that ordinance probably didn't go as far as we needed it to, uh, because that's clearly not the type of situation we want people living in in the city of Vincennes. Understand that they're homeless, but even people in a camper sometimes was homeless.
But the key thing too with that RV one is Brad set it up to where we worked with the individuals to make sure that we... Yeah, we didn't just throw 'em out.
Absolutely.
We worked with them. That was the key part that made the ordinance kinda special.
I've spoken with the pastor. I asked him about even trying to set him up some rooms in the basement of the church, and he goes, "Well, I'll just have to talk to my board members, and I'll get back with you," and I haven't heard nothing back with him. It's like we had three calls on complaints on it today.
Has he not been willing to work with you, or does he kinda pass the buck to the board?
Hmm, he more or less kinda passed the buck. He didn't act like he wanted to listen to me much at all.
So what I would suggest is I think that we need to update that ordinance to include, I mean, we had a very specific ordinance that dealt with that. We could include this particular portion of it to maybe expand that just a little bit.
I've contacted our state building inspector, and he was gonna contact his partner in Evansville and see what kinda ordinances they have on like little tent cities and stuff and get back with me.
Mr. Wilcox, have you, have you addressed this with the church board?
Not the board. I've talked to the minister several times.
Okay.
And I would think that that should be your course of action, would be to talk with the minister.
I have no idea how to get in touch with, with the board.
They should, they should have regular meetings, monthly meetings, so I, I may reach out to them.
We can reach out to them.
What I've gotten from the, the minister is the, is my problem. And if I was a good neighbor, you know, I told him I thought he was a bad neighbor, and he said if I was a good neighbor, I would just shut up and live with it.
No, that's not how that works.
Okay.
Uh, Brad, let's work on something, see what we can do. Um, I'll set up a time and I'll come in and meet with you, and we'll kinda go from there, see if we can't get something, and bring it to the mayor, see what he thinks about it, and then we can bring it to the council.
Maybe even a, uh, just a call to the, to the health department too, uh, to, to align our ordinance with a, whatever they would have as well. I, I know we're putting more work on you, Brad, but at least it gives, at least it, at least it gives you a, a solution to be able to work with. Right now, you don't have anything to work with. Okay.
It, uh, i- it, it should be a health issue with somebody urinating.
Yeah, 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 that's definitely...
You know, I mean, that, or out behind the building. That's, that's just not good. And the, the food being, uh, put out there under the cats, that's, uh, because what, what doesn't get eaten stays there, you know? I, I, I hate to do this. I mean, I'm seventy-seven years old. I've never been to a city council meeting before to complain about anything, but this is just ridiculous, you know?
And don't, and don't feel bad, and don't feel bad about coming and discussing this.
No.
I mean...
You're welcome here anytime.
This needs to be discussed.
I appreciate you coming here and not Facebook. Thank you.
Hundred percent, Joe. Thank you.
That was fantastic.
Yeah, that was perfect.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, old business. Do you do business updates?
All right, uh, I think I say this a lot, but business is doing very well. I was kinda curious of when we saw the bump to orange on Wednesday, what we would see, but, um, our business has stayed very busy. People were still out enjoying, uh, businesses here in Vincennes. Key thing, I think it's a broken record, but it's a broken record we need to keep going over, support our local businesses. We gotta keep the foot on the gas. Uh, we are in a very good spot. Um, and it's because we do support our local businesses, so let's keep that going.
And I'll also say along with that, um, we did award ninety thousand dollars of the hundred-and-fifty thousand we have for small businesses to hand out, so...
Move to county metric updates?
All right, so we didn't get the best news. We went from blue to orange last week, but we need to kinda put all that thing, pull that in context. I'm not saying that, you know, orange is a good thing, but we need to kinda look at it, um, through the lens of the numbers that we have. So when we were at orange the last time, we were seeing anywhere between, you know, twenty-five to thirty new cases a day. Right now, we're seeing single digits, and I think we've had a couple of days in the zeros going into, uh, the week, which is fantastic. Um, also too, when we were looking at positivity rate, we were testing around three-hundred people a day. When we had our first stop in orange, now we're around thirty, maybe? Today was ten. So it doesn't take a lot to throw your percentages off. When your percentages get thrown off, that's what bumps us up pretty quickly, and that's why you saw the big jump, uh, 'cause our percentage went from a four to an eleven. And that's what threw us into a two on that one. So, um, it does, you know, obviously, be, you know, use your precautions, be smart, but we need to put things in context. Um, and we're continuing to move forward in the city of Vincennes. We've still got a lot of great events planned. We're excited about it. School's getting ready to start. A lot of kids are out there back to school shopping. They are excited to see their teachers and be with their friends. I'm excited for the kids to be back in school. Um, so, uh, we need to just put things in context. When we do that, um, we're still in a good spot, and we're still moving forward.
Okay, we'll move to new business. First up is ordinance ten twenty-twenty-one, vacating a portion of an alley at three-twenty and three-twenty-four Main.
Uh, make a motion to read and approve ordinance ten twenty-twenty-one.
Second. Motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to read ordinance ten twenty-twenty-one and approve. Ordinance number ten twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance for the common council of the city of Vincennes, Indiana, vacating a portion of an alley located between three-twenty Main and three-twenty-four Main Street, Sections one, two, and three. Discussion.
Um, I'm Katie Cotter. I'm here on behalf of Moody Investment Properties LLC. Uh, and I have the manager here, Caitlin Ashby, with me. Um, she recently purchased the Wox Building at three-twenty Main Street, and basically what they're asking is to close the portion of the alley between that building and what is Wild Rose Boutique. Um, it's currently closed now and has been for some time due to the renovation. Um, basically, the plan is to put a commercial tenant in the first floor and renovate the upper floors for loft space. And they're going to need that section of the alley closed because that is, that side of the building is where the entrance will be, uh, to the lofts. And also, they need to put in a fire escape that will have to go there as well.
So Katie, in this, in this vacation, if, if we approve that vacation, how does that property then fall? Does half go to the Wild Rose and half go to the other?
I believe the case law on that says that it would basically get split down the middle between the, the Wild Rose property and the Wox Building. They would both own to the center of the alley. And also, it's my understanding that no one currently is using that for access to any of the, the surrounding property, and certainly not right now.
What's the Board of, this goes before the Board of Works too, doesn't it?
The city council ordinance, but there would need to be a public hearing with notice to, uh, adjacent landowners and utilities so that they may have things going down the center of that alley. We don't know about...
So tho- those notices have been sent, and the public hearing is scheduled for here, um, five-forty-five. I think it's August ninth, two weeks from today.
I'll tell you, I have a little hesitation on this one. And, and, and my hesitation is that it is in the downtown. It is, uh, an, an alleyway that could provide fire access to those buildings if anything should happen. You don't think so?
The fire department will never use those alleys, never.
So would we, would we be better off to lease it to the owners for as long as they own it?
I suppose that would be up to...
I think you have other plans also with that alley, don't you?
Yeah, we actually plan to use it as a community space, so I'm super involved with the Downtown Vincennes Association, um, and all that. I actually already have a giant metal park cut out exactly like one in downtown Evansville with lights strung around it. We'll have it at all community events downtown. I have plans for other shapes to be cut out and make it kinda like an art slash fun space, um, to be used with the community as well. We just don't want cars starting down it for the sheer fact of someone's carrying groceries, if a child's running out, whatever. It's, it's a safety hazard, and we do need to put fire escapes off the building, um, and the best space for them is to go into that alley. And I've talked with the owner next door, Wild Rose, and she's for it as well, um, just between our buildings to be marked off, and she can utilize it. We can utilize it downtown Vincennes Association and other events, um, that are already closing off Main Street. We can make it like a fun, community space as well.
Hey, I, I, I agree with that portion.
Yeah, no, definitely.
I, I agree with that portion. The city owns it, so that's one of the things that I, I balk at. What, what utilities are in that space?
That's why we've got to, they've gotta send notices and...
We actually just paid Duke Energy to relocate the power pole that was on the corner there to a different spot as well, so it's gonna be safer and smarter for, um, the purposes of accidenting.
And when I say the fire department won't use that, they will not have a fire apparatus in that alley.
Yeah, that's right.
And I'll...
I know that. The truck, no trucks gonna fit down there. I understand that. That at one time was a street, more than it was an alley, if you remember. That was City Hall where Wild Rose was at one time in the fifties. So I, I'm assuming, and, and there's a lot of utilities, uh, stormwater and, and sanitary in that alley, that, that's the only hesitation that I would have. I, I, and leave that up to the utility, I guess. So I, I, they'll find out more when they do those locates about how much they need access to that particular piece of ground. Maybe it's a right-of-way issue that's just continually there over time.
And...
Or an easement, I guess, for those people.
And we just sent those notices, and they have until the public hearing to kinda come forward. The only person I've heard from is Duke Energy, and they'd already been in discussions, but, um, certainly will be open to whatever they need to get access.
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, I can't remember that. So no parking, no, you're thinking art and...
Picnic tables, games.
I have said that we wanna put even like maybe like a fencing, but it's like a gate more or less, so we could open it or something, just so a car won't physically drive down there. But like when there's like an event or something, you know, it could be opened easily.
But it won't be close to the general...
Yeah, it'll be probably like a, like a metal, like historic wrought iron type is what kind of thing long-term. Again, we'll have, you know, Mr. Murray Ward, have to get the next owner to agree, those sorts of things.
That alleyway was my, kinda on my radar for, you know, a park, so...
Yes, yeah. It's a beautiful alley. We definitely wanna utilize it, um, for the community and stuff, but I just worry without it being closed to, as well with safety of the apartments and it's back to the, the commercial space as well, so it will be a high-traffic area, so I just don't think it's, um, for people walking out.
So I, I'm not concerned about you at all, at all. I'm concerned about the next owner.
Yeah.
And, and what they decide to do with the property, uh, and if they decide to close it off. So I, I know your motives are true and good. I, I do worry about the next owner and what happens at that point with them. And when we release ownership of that, we release the ability to, to have that be an access or a walkway through. That's my only thing. I, I mean, I know you're gonna do the right thing. You've done the right thing every step in downtown from day one. So I, I, I mean, I don't know.
I sort of understand that.
Yeah, it's not you. It's the next, it's not you. It's the next person who owns the property. Yeah. So anyway, I'll probably... So how, how cumbersome would it be to, to arrange a lease like that?
Very cumbersome. It's either vacated or keep... It's, it's hardly leased property, city property to a private...
If she should ever sell it, maybe it reverts back?
You can, uh, you can put it up for bid, declare it surplus, you know, do a portion of it, the entire, all, all the way over to Busterin.
So like he said, can we, can we make it to where if she would ever sell it, or either the owners, it would have to come back to us?
All the council can do is vacate. They can't put restrictions...
Yeah, they can't put any, any restrictions or covenants on that particular property.
It's, it's all or none.
Possible to put something with the property that says that that's to never be closed permanently, or that goes along with the title, or...
Once they own it, they own it to the center.
That's why, that's why I say I'm not worried about her. I'm worried about mine.
Yep. And there's nothing more fun than a neighborhood fence dispute down the center of an alley.
Play that, that one.
I don't know, I think it'd be good. Basically, it's all for none, it's all or nothing, so... Any other discussion up here?
Are we, are we looking at all?
Well, we're just doing, we're just doing first reading.
This is just first reading.
We're just doing first read anyway.
It goes to the, I mean, it goes to the, to a public hearing and the utilities have a say.
Utilities have a say, so we're fine. Like, I mean, I don't see any problem with us moving forward with this and then...
It needs to move forward, so we have better answers.
Get their say on it. Are we good with that? Call for question.
Yep.
Mr. Gornell?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, first reading of ordinance ten twenty-twenty-one passes.
Thank you. We'll see you in two weeks.
We do love what you're doing down there.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up is voluntary annexation Hillcrest and Bruceville Road.
All right, for the record, we had a public hearing, um, on the voluntary annexation of Hillcrest and Bruceville Road. Nobody spoke for or against. Um, and now, what am I making a motion for on this one?
I think that, I take that to be more informational, 'cause the ordinance is, will be coming down the road.
Okay, so the ordinance will be coming down the pipe? So this is just more informational then? Okay. All right.
Next is ordinance eleven twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance to the city of Vincennes, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of sale of bonds of the city for the purpose of providing funds to be used for the cost of funding capital improvements together with all necessary opportunities, related improvements in equipment in connection therewith.
All right, that was a big one. Uh, make a motion to approve ordinance eleven twenty-twenty-one.
I'll second.
Motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to have first reading of ordinance eleven twenty-twenty-one. Ordinance eleven twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance to the city of Vincennes, authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds of the city for the purpose of providing funds to be used for the cost of funding capital improvement, together with all necessary opportunities, related improvements in equipment in connection therewith. This is something the city does every few years to, uh, replenish their capital improvements, or rolling stock mostly, not to exceed two million six-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars containing, uh, Sections one and two, omitting the formal parts, because it's twenty-six pages long. Omitting the formal parts because it's twenty-six pages long.
Exactly. Just like everything.
Discussion. We've got accountants with ready here.
And just like, and just like you've said too, this is our first look at it, um, tonight. This starts the process of looking at these things. So we have a list that they presented to us of proposed capital, um, improvements. Make sure you take a look at that. Obviously, it's the first time. You've got to see it right now, but they're going to explain some things as we move forward. So guys, take it away.
Yeah, so as mentioned, this is something the city does every few years. Uh, the last time this was done was in twenty sixteen. For general obligation bonds, there's a tax rate that the city has and those bonds are paying off this year. So if you weren't to issue this, that tax rate would fall off. Uh, by reissuing this, we are just keeping, uh, keeping the tax rate going. This is part of your capital improvement plan and it's to fund, uh, well, these two pages full of items for the next few years that Tim passed out to all of you. On the final page of this, we have a circuit breaker impact that these bonds will do and Tim can go into more detail on that. And then, of course, if you guys have any questions, we're both here.
And just for the council, this is how we purchase police, the police vehicles, fire trucks. You'll see in there, there's, uh, updates to station two. There's refurbished ladder three. And this is two different bonds. There's bond A, which does basically the police department and all other departments in the city other than fire because fire has its own tax rate. So fire is bond, uh, is the series B. I will say that the series A is going to be a three-year bond instead of five. That will help us to get our police department vehicles up to where we need them to be. By just doing it every five years, it was going to take a good while, but we could get all the police department, all the police vehicles up to, uh, where we really need them. So that is changed to a three-year bond. So that will be back in three years if this is approved.
Tim Stricker, Ready Financial Group. Thank you for having me. As Mayor said, uh, the GOA, the, the first page here on that handout I handed to you, that is a three-year bond. I don't really want to get into the weeds here because there's a lot of stuff listed. Uh, just kind of looking at your big ticket items, there's about six hundred and ten thousand dollars of police cars over the next three years. Actually, I'm sorry, it's more than that. It's about two hundred and fifty-eight thousand a year. And then another big item, we got a couple of dump trucks in the streets department. And then parks, there's quite a bit going on. Uh, the biggest one-off there is the new skate park. Of course, keep in mind, there were about three or four other, I believe, fairly large ticket items in parks. So that could be swapped out because it's a like item. So it's not necessarily set in stone on that one. New Geo Series B, that's your five-year bond. Uh, and the reason why this one's a five-year for practical reasons is because we're, we're leasing, sorry, we're funding longer life equipment. So you'll see the biggest item on there is the new fire engine at about half a million dollars. And then just one other big ticket item I want to touch on is the, the breathing apparatuses and bottles at about three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So the breathing apparatus, every how many years those need to be replaced?
These, and it's not like they, they're going to be replaced every five years. It's as they're upgraded to what they have now, probably are fallen out of, a lot of the tanks are not, they can't
Can't use.
test them anymore. They can't be used. So it's time to update those, uh, in the same way with the fire gear, uh, that you see typically that one in the bond, but every five years that fire gear has to be replaced.
Right.
And it's up to the point that it's between two and three thousand dollars for a set per firefighter. And that's, we used to try to figure in ten sets in the budget every year. It's getting so expensive that we just need to move it to a five-year bond where we know it's covered and that they're going to be protected, new gear every five years.
Moving forward, are we going to add maintenance to the stations in these bonds?
Well, it's in there, right?
Maintenance, the station just falls under the normal budgets. The, uh, station two, we put a hundred thousand in there to do some remodeling of the station two to see if we can update it a little bit and
Do you think that'll be enough to be able to get what we need done there?
Yeah, I think so.
At least a good start on it, Dan, wasn't it?
So this one has maintenance, fire stations, maintenance, twenty thousand dollars a year.
Right. Well, yeah. And that can be used along with the to update that station.
They don't need all that, then you can revert that to there?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just a second, what Mayor just said about the maintenance on the fire stations, there's some flexibility within your, your normal capital plan, within your normal operating funds to, to fund a little more of that. And I believe we actually already have some of those items budgeted as well in your, in your plan moving forward.
So the three hundred and fifty, I'm back to the apparatus, breathing stuff. That number, do we already have an estimate of that cost, I guess?
Every, all these figures you see in these bonds come from the department heads.
Okay.
They are the ones that make these capital requests for the departments and then really helps us to
If they, if it's, if it costs more than that or less than that, what happens to that money?
It'll stay in the bond and, and it could go to help with the station or
So if it's less than that, it stays in the bond. If it's, if it's more than, what happens then?
My guess is it won't be less. The same way with that fire gear. They're, they're not going to get cheaper. And then on the initial bond, I know we've got the, I know that the skate park was a, a big item with the council in the last couple of years. So we thought maybe we'd try to work in the bonds to see if we couldn't get that done.
And when it says new signs at parks, is that like entry, exit, those kind of things in the front and the back?
And as you know, the Parks Department has its own tax rate. Typically, every year they go on the red. And part of that's because of pool. Uh, this is stuff that needs to be done that cannot get completed in our normal tax rate, if they're, they're budgeted. So that's why you see a lot more parks than you do the other departments.
Do you have any ideas, like when we say increased security measures at the parks, what are we talking about with that?
It is, uh, probably looking at cameras.
Okay.
We have a lot of trouble out there when they, especially the parking.
The backside.
Yeah. Look at stuff like that. You'll see in here, I think there's the sidewalks in the park that are, and this isn't just a park, it's the parks.
It's the parks, yeah.
It's not just, uh, the lamp posts, that is obviously great park. A lot of those are getting really wobbly and, and need to be replaced. So
And that'll improve the lighting in those areas specifically for that?
So that'll get us like two poles or something? Those, those two things are incredibly expensive.
Any other questions on specific items?
No, everything looks good. Now, on this one, do we have, if we approve tonight, then we go, do we have any public hearing on these or what do we have?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is more of just like an informational, we're first reading, introducing the ordinance. And then the actual adoption of the additional appropriations to actually fund these items. I believe that meeting is scheduled for late August.
Okay.
So we'll need to advertise and follow the statutory process for that.
And then that gives us time to look through and if we've got questions or we want to make any kind of tweaks, then we've got that.
We have a little bit of time to do that, but we need to advertise by August the twelfth.
Okay.
So
Our next council meeting.
Yes. We're advertising. The next council meeting would be the ninth. Ninth and the twenty-third.
All right. Anyone else have any further questions? Anything else?
Good. Call for a question.
Okay, and then this last page is very, very busy. Uh, I apologize for the small font.
We're ready.
Really, the moral of the story here is we're not, yes, there are impacts, but they're mostly to the city. If you look on the very bottom, there's about, as of the twenty nineteen, so twenty nineteen assessed twenty twenty tax bills, which unfortunately, that's the most up-to-date information we can get. Uh, there's about twenty-four hundred parcels that will, that will have a slight increase to their tax rate due to the new bond. And this typically happens because of AV fluctuations. So we're really, we're adopting a rate that's closer to the original rate when we took on the bonds, the first set of bonds. And over time, usually that rate goes down because our AV goes up. So if we're in, we reintroduce at the higher rate, the rate's going to go down again like it, it did in the past. But initially, you'll see about ninety-three cents a month, uh, on average for that little subset of parcels of property owners. And then most of the impact is going to go to the city, which that is really just a, an operating levy loss to the city. So really increasing tax, tax credits, tax cap credits, sorry, by about two hundred thousand dollars every year on the city. We don't really foresee this being an issue, uh, with the budget. And that's mostly because we're, we're growing the max levy at about four point three percent a year anyway. So we're about a two hundred thousand dollar net there between the two hundred thousand dollar loss and then the four hundred thousand dollar increase to your levy. So we don't really see that any of the budget items that were given to us will be an issue this year. Does anyone have questions on the specific impacts?
Call for question.
Alrighty. Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gornell?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, or the first reading of ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-one passes. Next up is, I assume, ordinance twelve, twenty twenty-one, which, uh, authorizes the proceeds of the general obligation bonds of twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion to read and approve, uh, ordinance twelve, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Good motion by President Salter, sent by Vice President Grove to read, uh, first reading of ordinance twelve, twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance twelve, twenty twenty-one, an ordinance to the city of Vincent's appropriating the proceeds of the general obligation bonds of twenty twenty-one containing sections one, two, and three appropriating up to two million, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, discussion. And this is basically you approve to do the bonds, the first ordinance and this one ordinance gives the people to spend the bonds.
Correct.
Correct.
Cute.
It's a procedure to everything.
Yeah, always, isn't there?
Any questions?
Any questions, guys? Okay.
Mr. Gornell?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes. And first reading of ordinance twelve, twenty twenty-one passes by a vote of seven to zero. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move back up to, uh, see which is Isaiah House.
Uh, I invited the Isaiah House to come and, uh, discuss all the good things that are happening there. Um, obviously to keep, keep us all in the loop of this exciting project that's happening here in Knox County.
And I appreciate you being patient with us while we talk about the rest of this business.
It's been very intere- interesting.
You're going to be at all those council meetings from here on?
From now on, I'm just going to come to all of them. Just for fun, yeah. Um, my name is Rhonda Paulson and I'm the founder and executive director of Isaiah One Seventeen House. Um, I'm actually from Johnson City, Tennessee. The first Isaiah One Seventeen House opened in northeast Tennessee in two thousand eighteen. Um, we expanded into Indiana with our first Indiana home being opened last summer in Vanderburg, Evansville, Indiana. And now, in October of this year, we'll be opening our second Indiana home right here in Vincent's. Jacqueline Cunningham is your local program coordinator and she is currently at First Baptist Church training volunteers um, to love on the children that will enter through that red door. So I'm here, um, as a replacement for tonight. I just wanted to tell you a little bit in case you don't know about Isaiah One Seventeen House. It really was a ministry and a nonprofit that came out of personal experience. Uh, my husband and I became foster parents in two thousand fourteen. And we were sitting in a conference room, um, at a, a Department of Children's Services, um, in Washington County, Tennessee. And that was when we found out that from the time a child is removed until they're placed, there's a lag time. There's this time where they don't know where they're going and they don't know what to expect. And during that time, they're most always hungry, they're tired. If they're allowed to bring any of their personal possessions with them, it's in a black trash bag. And the current situation across this country, not just here, but also here in Vincent's, is that child waits in an office. Sometimes for an hour, sometimes six hours, sometimes twelve hours. No bed, no bath. They sit and they wait. In two thousand fifteen, we welcomed our first foster placement and that's when we saw removal day firsthand. We, we said yes to a nine-month-old little boy and he came to us with nothing but a borrowed outfit and a roach-infested diaper bag. And that's when we learned that not in some far-off land, not some other country, but here in the United States, children enter our foster care system with nothing. And then we lived it from two thousand fifteen to two thousand seventeen. We, we were this little boy's foster parents. His name is Isaiah. And Isaiah opened our eyes to a world that we didn't know existed. We learned all about removal day and how it's one of the hardest days a child will ever walk and that they feel invisible and they feel alone. We learned about how hard the caseworkers are working. And they're working at an impossible job because they have a traumatized sibling group of three in their cubicle while expected to get a mountain of state's paperwork done promptly. It can't be done. And we learned about the need for foster families and how desperate that need is. But the call comes at two AM and they say, we have a sibling group of three. They have zero possessions. They have lice. Can we bring them to your home right now? And so in January of two thousand seventeen, um, we started Isaiah One Seventeen House. And all of our homes exist to number one, reduce trauma for that child the day that they're removed. So now they don't go to an office, they come to a home. And we have a fully stocked bathroom. If you need a bath, we got a fully stocked bathroom. And if you're hungry, we got a fully stocked kitchen. And if you need a new backpack for school, go pick one out. And we're going to have loving volunteers greet you at the door and call you by name and look you in the eye and remind you that you're not in trouble on this day, that you have done nothing wrong and that you are loved. And we exist to lighten the load for that caseworker. Every one of our homes has an office space. And so that caseworker can come in and they can work on that mountain of state's paperwork. And we'll love on the child and together we'll do this really well. But we're also going to look at that caseworker and say, what's your favorite coffee? What's your favorite creamer? I know you've not eaten all day. We're going to get you some dinner. We want to love on that caseworker. And then thirdly, that call for that foster family might still come at two AM. But now they get to say, we have a sibling group of three. They've been at the Isaiah One Seventeen House. They played outside, they ate a snack, they had a bath. They're in their new pajamas with their teeth brushed and they have bags full of stuff, everything they need for the next two to three days. And by the way, foster family, what do you need? You need a car seat? You need a twin bed? You need formula diapers, wipes? Don't go to Walmart. We want you to know how much we appreciate you. And so that's what we're getting ready to do right here in Vincent's. You currently have about two hundred and fifty children in state's custody. That means there were two hundred and fifty children that could have walked through that red door and been reminded that they are loved and that there's hope. And we want to lighten the load of your caseworkers and we want to ease that transition for your foster parents. And so we just wanted you to be aware that we're coming and we're excited. Um, and you will all be invited to our ribbon cutting, which we hope to happen in October. Do you have any questions for me about the current project here or about our mission?
I ran into Jacqueline this morning at the coffee house and she said you were a good speaker. I think she was telling the truth.
Well, it's, it's my passion. There's no doubt about that.
Yeah, you can hear that passion in your voice. Yeah, sounds like a great program.
Thank you. Thank you. And we did adopt Isaiah. He is now our son officially, so.
Congratulations. And we're excited to have you in this county.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Citizens for Truth COVID Awareness, Sandy Ivors. And we appreciate you being patient while we
Well, I appreciate Rhonda and all that they're doing with Isaiah One Seventeen. I hope you're as, as enthusiastic about what I'm going to share with you as what she shared. Because what I'm going to share with you also pertains to our children and to our teenagers and to our adults as well. So, uh, I'm Sandy Ivors and I represent Citizens for Truth and we just are And we just are newly formed because there were a lot of us, actually hundreds and thousands, on one of our sites. We have over 1,500 people in the last probably 10 days that have joined. There's a lot of us that have been concerned about the COVID, not about the people getting sick and dying from it. Not necessarily that, because we've got another data besides what's put on mainstream, the information on mainstream media. And so we've stepped outside of that because a lot of us have done research on our own, and we've learned that mainstream media doesn't always get, give you correct data. And so we went to different sites, and honestly, they're Christian sites, and so they're not syndicated. They do their research, and they are definitely for the well-being of the people. And so on these websites, we found that the data that's been coming forth is inaccurate. It's been manipulated, and it's been set up really to control people. And so we've done research on the mask and found that they're really detrimental. They have no effect whatsoever as in preventing COVID. I've got all the research for you right here in these folders that I'll give to each of you. And it's our hope that you will take this information, look at it for yourselves, and then start the conversation in our community in a different direction. We do not need to be afraid of this new Delta variant. Several doctors, I've got 14 listed, I've got four attorneys listed, because now the attorneys are stepping up and they're saying enough is enough. There's people just like me and all these others that I'm connecting with, and we're saying, we've got to get accurate information out to the public to stop the fear. And in particular, now, since they're promoting giving vaccinations to our children, we cannot have that. These are experimental, really shots that they're giving, they're not FDA-approved. You can look at the data, it's right here, I've got page after page. They're not approved, they don't know what the end result will be. And in fact, FDA did say the vaccines do not prevent COVID. They do not prevent the transmission of COVID, and they do not prevent death. So the question comes to mind, what do they do? This is what we, we know as scientific fact, that over 10,000 people have died after they've gotten the vaccination. There's over 400,000 people that have had injuries from mild to severe. There are some people, and we met with the Knox County Health Department Board, and we brought this information to them. And we also had a lady, and she was on Facebook showing the results of after she had gotten the vaccination. And she couldn't walk, she couldn't function, she was a nurse. And it had been suggested to her that she get the vaccination, so she did. And after that, just a few days, she couldn't work, right now she cannot walk or cannot work. She has been taking ivermectin, which is a treatment for COVID, you don't hear that on mainstream. We want to get this information out. You can use Listerine mouthwash in the morning and the evening, and that will kill any COVID parasite that's in your mouth. So there's easy remedies out there, but you do not hear it on the mainstream media. And so, we just want to get that out so people can really make an intelligent decision. Do I really want to give this to my child? Because the adults right now, and the reason people haven't gotten the vaccine is because they know this. But now there's a push, and it's coming right here from our health department, from Dr. Stewart, pushing to give the children vaccines. And I went online and I was looking at, Mr. Salters had given a report, I saw that you talk about the numbers each month at these meetings. And the report was from June 2nd to, I believe it was the 12th, around there, that the numbers were very, very low, this was last month, numbers very low, everything was great. And all the statistics, all the stats looked really good. At that very same time, I went to a homeless summit meeting. Dr. Stewart's nurse was there, and she spoke up, and she said, "Yes, Dr. Stewart's goal is to give 50 children a vaccine per week." That was in that same timeframe that Mr. Salters gave the report, I saw it was on the radio, and it came forth here that the, all the numbers were down. So why in the world would Dr. Stewart be promoting and pushing a vaccination on our children that's never been proven to be safe or effective? Neither one of those things. It is proven that there's been many, many injuries and many, many deaths. And so we're asking you to look at this information when you have your discussion next month to talk about it. We're asking you, Mr. Salters, when you go online, when you go on TheBlaze, to give your report, to look up this other side of the information and give those other numbers. But let's give everybody the opportunity to know that, hey, there's some side effects here. There are people dying, there are people being injured here. Not only that, but the Nuremberg Code, which was brought about after the Holocaust when 6,000 Jews were murdered. I mean, 6 million Jews were murdered. And during that time, those people were experimented on with experimental drugs. They did not have a choice as to whether or not they could take those treatments. So the Nuremberg Code came out of that, and that code says this, that if any experimental drug is given to a person without their having knowledge of the injury or side effects, then whoever is giving that, whoever is approving that, whoever is promoting that falls under that code and will be, have criminal charges brought against them. And so, we talked about this briefly at the Board of Health. I wasn't given the opportunity, we were given four minutes to speak, and I turned my time over to Sean, who was the lady who had been injured. And when she shared her story, apparently, I don't know what they were thinking, honestly. I don't know how they could walk away hearing her story, her testimony, and not be affected by it. So I want you to know, I appreciate you guys, my husband was on the county council. He spent a whole lot of time doing research, a lot of hours, so that when he came to the meeting, he knew the facts and he made decisions accordingly. So I know it takes a lot of time and effort. And so we're just asking you to take the time and the effort to look at this information and bring forth to our community this accurate data and team up with the other boards, because we'll be at every single board meeting in the city and the county. We'll, we will be there. We've got to rise up as a community, come together, get the information out there for the well-being of our community. So that's what we're asking you to do. So I have these folders for y'all. Can I give these to you?
Does anybody have a question for the House? I'm beyond here. If you have a hurting of this, if you'd be very, Mr. Mayor, I'll bring yours in tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's fine.
Can I leave you in this office, so?
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll look over material, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to claims.
All right, is this the right amount, Kathy? All right, just wanna make sure. Uh, make a motion to pay claims in the amount of $256,000. Darn it, $256,918.10, I think I got it there. Still did it.
Got a motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to pay the claims in an amount of $256,918.10. Are there any questions on claims?
Mr. Ravellette.
Yes.
Mr. Gornau.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
I do need to abstain from the Auto Glass Express claim, but other than that, I mean, yes.
Mr. Lau.
Yes.
Mr. McNeese.
Yes.
Mr. Salters.
Yes.
Mr. Stengel.
Yes.
Okay.
And claims are paid by a vote of seven to zero with the one claim that Councilman Grove is going to abstain from. Move to miscellaneous.
Um, we'll need to have a budget hearing just to kind of touch up on stuff. I know the mayor's been working with his department head, so kind of clean up what we've done last time. Probably somewhere, maybe, hopefully maybe to the end of the week, but probably next week is what it's looking like. I only got a response from a couple people.
That'll work good for me.
All right, next week works good for Kathy. All right, so I'll send out an email, we'll start going from there, does that work?
I'm good.
All right, I just wanna make sure.
I won't be available for. Starting Thursday till then, next Friday.
Kathy will guide us, right, Kathy?
Absolutely.
All right, so I'll send an email, we'll get times on that, so we'll, we'll go from there.
All right. Okay, move on to public comment.
My name is Alex Rudolph, and I'm the founder and director of Another Chance Christ Ministries, and also the pastor of the Horrible Church at 12th and Broadway. So I would like to have some rebuttal comment in reference to some of the things that were said. I started Another Chance Christ Ministries in November of 2006. I took on the issue that we had in this city of people coming out of drug addiction, coming out of incarceration with no help. And so we established a place for men, we've helped over 800 men. We've never asked the city for any assistance because this is the church, and that's the job of the church, is to help those that are downtrodden and needy. We have developed since then a women's center, and we have a home for homeless families. We have in the place of the women's center, often, working with these women in a, in a system of getting their children restored to them. As of late, especially post-COVID, we've had many people come to us that are in a homelessness circumstance that don't want to live in the men's home, they don't want to live in the woman's home, or they're not, they're not a fit for the shelter because we already have the shelter full of other people. My burden as a minister is to not turn people away. My burden isn't to be defiant to the city either. So when the city inspector called upon me and told me that, that there was possibly an ordinance, I researched and found that there truly isn't an ordinance, as is the confession of this council. And then to hear that this council then wants to look forward to making that ordinance disheartens me. Rather than a council maybe looking forward into, "What can we do, City of Vincennes, that pledges allegiance to a flag, One Nation Under God, what can we do to take this opportunity, the privilege to serve those that are certainly much less fortunate than us?" So if someone sleeping in my tent irritates my neighbor who isn't even adjacent, I can't really help that. The trash and the cigarette butts, I can find them on Main Street, I can find litter on the streets after we have one of our glorious parades. Anytime you gather people together and you love on them and you give them assistance, you're gonna have some litter left behind. The dumpster has nothing to do with the homelessness issue, he's already said. We put lime in there, we poured bleach in there, we cleaned up the problem, and that's happened one time in the seven years that we've been on the corner of 12th and Broadway. So we don't make a habit of filling up our dumpster with nasty smelling trash. And so my hope is that this has brought an awareness to this council that there is an issue. I've heard that the homeless have been trying to stay in the city parks, those are public spaces, and they've been asked to leave. I understand that, if I have children and I'm playing in the park and there's someone asleep on the park bench with a bottle in their hand, that might be an area we want to move our children from. But we can't run these people out of this town because they have rights as humans, the same as we do. And so we have to find a way to embrace this problem, it's a reality, it's in our face. I don't have all the solutions, but I identify the problem, and I put my hand in, and I extend it out to those in need, and I try to pull them up. The couple that he said that was living out there, they found jobs, they worked at Old Chicago, they got enough money to relocate to Kentucky, they're living with an aunt, and they're going to work in a factory to earn a sustainable income. So they received that help up in this city. The reason I didn't have the porta potty in place is because there were events going on, and nobody in town that provides porta potties had any available. As soon as those events ended, the porta potty was immediately delivered, free of charge, by Crockett's because he also sees that this is a problem and finds often that homeless people sleep in his porta potties no matter where he places them. It is a huge issue. I know you've got a lot to do, I know you've got a lot on your plate, I have a lot to do and I have a lot on my plate. But I can't turn my face from the needs of people, and I won't. I have a higher call, and that's the government from heaven, the call from God to minister to those people. And so I'm here to stand with the city, and I've brought others with me that are here to stand with the city to see what can we do to benefit those that are less fortunate. So thank you for your time.
I just want to add that clarification too. I know that you said that you were upset to hear that we wanted to look into an ordinance for the situation. We've had a lot of success with the ordinance that we did with the RV. And one of the things that, when we put these ordinance in place, it's not just about the neighbors or the people that are affected or might think that they don't want that around, but it's about the well-being of the individual in that situation. And we, we know and understand that. And the key thing is, is our city inspector has done an absolutely fantastic job, thank you Brad.
No complaints.
For what he does of putting our citizens first, and this is what the council is committed to, the mayor.
Is a homeless person, not a citizen.
And we are committed to the people that are here in the City of Vincennes, so.
They're in the City of Vincennes.
Yes, and we're, and we're committed to their well-being. So we've got your side of the story now, we've got the neighbors, and then we're gonna work with our city inspector to make sure we provide a safe environment and for the well-being of the people that are here in our community.
Great, that's my hope, Mr. Mayor.
And I just say that city inspector and I will work with you and the neighbors to try to get some of the issues.
Right now, as of now, there's no one in that yard.
But also, I would like to see if you would be a part of, there was a committee being put together on homeless, kind of through United Way and Mark Hill, and would like for maybe to see if you can join that group and.
I can get you his number.
Yeah, get me his information.
Solve this problem.
I've got all his information.
The entire county, it's.
Yeah, great, thank you kindly.
Hey, thank you very much.
Next up is, for the good of the order.
Uh, Brian, I mean, Councilman Grove, sorry, District 1. My.
Ooh.
Mine is happening right now, we got all three bands playing at the food trucks, did a benefit.
Big night.
Benefit.
Big night for you guys.
Big night down there, so after this, maybe go over and relax and listen to some music.
That'll be good, all right, District 2.
Uh, yes, this kind of covers a couple of districts, but on Monday, the 19th, cop cycling for survivors rolled through Vincennes. Jom's gonna help grow, but had a situation he couldn't, but they, they do this every year. They've come through Vincennes in the past, we've been a hydration station, but this year we served lunch, and they reached out to me a few months ago and asked me to do that, and several businesses in the community donated to food. They raised $72,000 this year for scholarships for fallen officers who've died in the line of duty or passed away in the line of duty, and it was really nice because they're, they did a ceremony before lunch, and they recognize three of the officers that have, in Vincennes Police Department. Some of them go back so old that they didn't even have their badge number, the badge number was not available. And there was one Knox County, um, um, town marshal that was, died in the line of duty. So I thought it was really great, and they plan on doing that, I mean, they plan on coming to Vincennes next year and being a high choice, right, a lunch spot as well, hopefully can get more. The police, the fire department was well worth it too, because it was at Vincennes Township Fire Department, it would be nice if we get. I reached out to some local media, events, media, but didn't get any response. And so I hope this, maybe in years to come, the community will get behind that and support them as well because it's a very worthwhile cause. And just in my district, just seeing a lot of people doing remodeling and home improvements, it's exciting, especially since they hear about high lumber costs and things like that, some of the extensions are, some of the additions are pretty extensive too. So I'm glad for that, that's all I have.
All right, Councilman Stengel, what we got, District 3?
Uh, there's some news on the Knox County Records Library. They have a company, they selected from the bidding process that's going to tear down this old records building and haul it away, and hopefully, everything goes well, it'll be gone in a couple of weeks.
Good, good, good. All right, Councilman Ravellette, District 4.
All right, not, not just in my district, but I think all over the city. I'm very excited to see the KITA program continuing this year. Collecting, you know, backpacks and utility, or toiletries and things for children to go back to school, their essentials. And this, this year especially with the COVID situation, I think it's very important that people do what they can to help with the KITA program. And also, it's getting very close, Texas Roadhouse, soft opening next weekend, it's on the way.
Yeah, you're really excited about that.
I am.
You've been rubbing it in our face for... All right. Councilman Lau, District 5, what we got?
This past weekend, on Saturday, the YMCA held the family try out at Gray Park. It was a wonderful event. Lots of families, lots of young people out there working on health and wellness and it was a, good to see everybody out there. The Y always does a great, a great job there with the kids. Also, wanted to give a shout out to the Parks Department. Jared was out there working hard with them, getting everything put together, making sure everything was clean and ready to go for them. Just a good opportunity. The kids had an enjoyable time to see them running around and just going from swimming to running to biking and they were just, they were so excited. And the Y gave away some bicycles and some backpacks and some helmets and some other things like that. And it was just, it was great to see the park so full and active and vibrant. So, I just wanted to give out a shout out to both of them and say, you know, terrific job. Thank you.
All right. Councilman McNeese?
So, I want to talk about housing. And we had a, there has been a lot of work done by the City of Vincennes, the Vincennes Redevelopment Commission and the Knox County Development Corporation to increase the housing within our community. Why that's important, as he's looking at me about homelessness. When we have 40 houses on the market right now, our housing prices go way up. That puts downward pressure on rental prices and rental prices go way up. And when rental prices go way up, that prices some people out of rental houses and they end up on the streets. So, the other day, the KCDC came out with their housing study that really validated a lot of the concerns and thoughts that we had had, why the redevelopment commission is doing a housing project in downtown Vincennes, why they're doing one on Broadway, why this voluntary annexation process is happening right now to increase the housing in our community. All those things are very important and probably the most important thing that we're going to see come out of here in the next few years. So, that is my good of the order up and down the scale.
Yeah. It was a, it was a good release of a study that we've been looking forward to. My for good of the order, if you've not been past Grouslin in a while, they've done a new paint job. You've got a nice cream color instead of the white, so they're going more to the actually historic color of the paint. And then, I think they're doing a Kelly green kind of shutters that they'll be putting on, so things will really pop there. And they were looking at October, I think, into September, beginning of October is when they'll be back and ready to go. And if you haven't been down there, I'd encourage you to go. But the next time that we meet, school's going to be in session and all the schools are moving forward and we're really excited about that for a full year full of activities that, you know, some of the kids had to miss out. It's been nice from my experience, obviously, as one of the coaches for the football team, being able to have all the kids together, being able to be in the weight room together and get normal practices. Before, you know, a year ago, we got three weeks to get ready before season and that was pretty rough. But we've been able to have our summer activities. Kids are excited. They're ready to head back to school. We've got registration stuff next week at all of our elementaries, middle school and high school. And then, school starts. It's another fun-filled year. So, we've got a lot of good things happening here in Vincennes and there's a buzz going around right now, back to school stuff. Mayor?
I just want to bring up August 1st, Sunday, this party at the Pavilion, getting ready for schools to go back. Vincennes Best Barber, they're giving free haircuts to the kids. I forget the age range, up to 13. Help kids get their haircut and be excited to go back to school. Rainbow Beach will close last day is August 1st. I have to commend Paula and JR for an amazing job this year. Couldn't have done it without them. And with that, I will say that there will be a city employee swim, either August 6th or 7th, for all city employees and their families. And you, all of you are invited. And other than that, real quick, on the area plan that came up last meeting, from the area, the things from area plan, Brad is working on those. There are other things that need to be updated in this plan for the city, so he'll be making recommendations for area plan for the changes that need to be made as far as the city goes.
Those are comments that we should be making back to the area plan for those situations. Joey, one more, Watermelon Festival?
The Watermelon Festival?
Yeah.
That comes up.
Watermelon Festival's the first weekend in August?
Yes.
So, everybody go downtown Vincennes and enjoy our good crop of watermelon.
If nothing else, we just need a motion to adjourn.